Welcome to the Alden Borough, June twenty twenty five caucus meeting. If you have a cell phone, would you please silence it so we're not interrupted during the meeting? Thank you. Uh, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mayor Chechi.
Here.
President Prokopio.
Present.
Councilwoman Black. Councilman Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly. Councilwoman Lambert. Councilwoman Smythe. Councilman Walker.
Here.
All present.
Uh, I believe we have a special presentation this.
Indeed, we do. Wearing in of a part-time officer, Rashida Horn, would you like to come up, please? Rashida is a graduate from Chester High School in two thousand nine, Dower County Municipal Police Academy in twenty eighteen, class of one fifty-three. Officer Horn is currently a full-time officer with the Dower County Sheriff's Office since twenty nineteen and a part-time officer with East Lansdown Park. With Officer Horn tonight are her sons, Jamir and Jasar, Frisbee and her sister, Jaron Frisbee and her sister, Marissa Crawford. Okay, so why don't you stand right next to mom over here? Why don't you hold that? And Chief, what should we do? I think let's do the, you're right there. That's good. I don't want to plot the line, I'm good. For the chief as well, okay. Okay, yeah, yes, and please raise your right hand. I, Rashida Horn, do swear. To support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the laws and ordinances of the Borough of Alden. And to perform the duties. Of my office as police officer.
My office as police officer.
Of my duty, of my office as police officer. Of the Borough of Alden with fidelity. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Let's, let's have, why don't we first do, um, why don't we first do the family? And then we'll do mayor and chief. And maybe show your back.
Right here, guys. That's fine.
You got it?
Yeah.
Let me get in there too. Okay, yeah. And then let me, can I, can I come right here? I will have the chief, yeah.
Let me take the bottle.
One more.
And now I just want to do just the chief.
And three.
Thank you, family. It was a meet you.
Thank you, thanks. Uh, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Welcome, Rashida. Congratulations.
Oh, you're the best. Thank you, John. And thank you, officers. Thank you for being here. Thank you, you too.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you. All right.
Okay. Why don't we open this door?
No, like, no. Mayor, you're still up?
All right, let me un. Turn off the sound on this. Okay. All right. Welcome, everybody, again, and. Let's see if I still have. Mr. Feinberg were here, he'd be dismayed that I'm not finding here it is. Rusty Pen. I have to sign this proclamation. This is the proclamation time, right? Is that what's up? Okay. So, this is a proclamation in honor of Pride Month twenty twenty-five, whereas. The Borough of Alden recognizes and celebrates the diversity, strength, and contributions of the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to affirm our commitment to equality. Inclusion and respect for all individuals regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas Alden stands with its LGBTQ plus residents, families, and allies in promoting a welcoming and supportive community for everyone. Now, therefore, I, Michael Chechi, mayor of the Borough of Alden, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-five as Pride Month in Alden. And encourage all residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equal rights and dignity for all people. And to celebrate the vibrancy and resilience of the LGBTQ plus community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand. And caused the official seal of the Borough of Alden to be affixed this fourth day of June twenty twenty-five. And this is a historic day. We've never done this before, so. Go us and go Pride Month in Alden. Cheers. All right. There we go. I've set my hand. That concludes my presentation, but my presentation of a proclamation, District President.
You have reports to the Borough Officers, you are still on.
Oh, golly. Okay. Um. All right. Okay. This is a FYI. I'm hoping it won't be the case, but uh, because given the fact that we have, um, you know. Budget constraints right now, um, there's a possibility that we may be required to replace, this is FYI, you, you don't know this. May need to uh, replace, and our finance committee. May need to replace our computers for the police in order to be. CGIS compliant. After October. So, why would that be? Starting in October, um, Windows will no longer support Windows ten. We're old-fashioned around here, so, and our computers are so old. Being the good stewards of the taxpayer money of Alden, uh, residents, we do not, we cannot upgrade it to Windows eleven. It's not a possibility on these computers, so, we've. What our plan was, in order to tie us over until we can budget it for next year, was that we would do. What you call like an end-of-life extension, so basically extended support with Microsoft. I have to find out if that, so, for those of you who aren't. Remembering or maybe don't know, CGIS stands for Criminal Justice Information Systems. That is the set, I guess, I'm assuming federal standards by which, um, all. Criminal justice data is, um, the guidance for that. Data. And so, we're hoping that we can still, I think. I would argue that we should still be able to be in compliance because by extending the support. We will be getting security patches, which is obviously their main concern in ensuring that we secure the data. So, that's just fresh off the presses, that was this afternoon. Um, I think maybe you saw that email from Shalonda or maybe.
I did, I didn't get a chance to watch.
Okay. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we budget for some new computers? Two more.
Five thousand, we budgeted.
Five thousand, but we, however, that would require us to replace. I think two patrol and one chief. Is there anyone else that would have access?
Well, not chief would do it from his laptop, but. We would have to replace the two in the squad room, that's for sure.
But the chief would have, would need access to, you know, CGIS databases from his.
Okay, then, yeah.
And a laptop, so TBD.
I was gonna ask, the one-for-one. Which?
Yeah. Although, the chief doesn't have a laptop now, it would go from a desktop to a laptop. Okay, now, before I get into, um, my big presentation, I, I'm folding in my hand. An extension of this disaster emergency, are we just, what's the plan as far as the timeline on this? Do we?
Have a. We're having a motion to extend it for another thirty days.
That's coming about down here.
Sorry, that's, I don't have to do that yet, okay.
But so, uh, what is, what is our plan on that, as far as, are we gonna, we don't, we don't know TBD?
Continue with extended till we find out if there's going to be any reimbursement for it. We're, from the presentation at the last council meeting. We are fortunate that Clylindale has their own fire, or ambulance service. So, we are basically covered, however. This backup support is less and less because of Crozier, so. There's some question as to if, how that might impact us.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have to find out when, okay, now, the main thing, the thing you saw me. Uh, feverishly, uh, stapling, yes. And you'll have to forgive me, I'm gonna hand these out, but I'm very embarrassed because it shows what a crappy. Well, I think it's not the printer itself, it's the ink, I think I have a defective ink and it looks completely nuts, but anyway. What I'm proposing, I've discussed this with our finance committee and with our Borough Council President, I'm proposing that we can, we plan to do. A more. Before I say all this, let me just acknowledge the superb job that Peggy, John. Marlene and Joyce have done year after year. In ensuring that we have a budget. That contains everything we've needed, so. Thank you very much for, all four of you, and Dan, of course, Mr. President, by forgiving, all five of you. It's, you've done a perfectly. Excellent job, exceptional job, so, however. Um. This team can't be expected. Uh, to have a detailed knowledge of the needs of every. Department and every committee, as you all can. So what I'm proposing is that we actually have a process for thinking through what the Borough needs and actually submitting proposals. For projects, projects can be either. Budget impacting, they can require purchases of services or, or products. Or they don't have to be budget impacting. Um, an example of something that wouldn't be budget impacting would be, um, you know, doing a review of police, um. Policies that we have talked about, um, something that we want to plan for. In twenty twenty-six, now, just to back up a little further. Um, I generally look down on people that, not look down on them, but I look down on the idea when people suggest that. Government should be run like a business, government is not a business, right? Not even a nonprofit business, it's a government. It provides services that are different from business, however, one thing that I do think is a possible, um. Practice that I think would be very helpful to adopt from business is planning, we don't want you to come in, chief, yeah. Is. Planning. For the projects for the upcoming year. Uh, in my company, they, uh, my company and my day job, they have something called the Book of Work, very grandiose, but basically. At a high level, the upper management comes up with what they, and you guys are the upper, upper management here. Comes up with the plan for, okay, what, what's gonna happen next year in terms of what, what products are we gonna be introducing, what markets are we gonna try to get into? Um. Similarly, I think, you know, what we should do is come up with something similar, we don't need to call it book of work, but something where. We know in twenty twenty-six. Here's what we're planning to get done. And, um, and here's what we're gonna, you know, potentially budget towards that. So. Um, what I'm proposing is basically pretty straightforward. I'm proposing that each of us here. Including Peggy, John, the chief, um, Deb, everyone, and of course, yeah, every council member. Over the next three weeks, really give some thought. Um, I would, about what, in your area, you think we're gonna need to, uh, be. Working on in twenty twenty-six. Right now, think big, right? We're not doing budgeting until September. This is the June meeting, so, the plan would be, um, in the July meeting, we would come with the ideas. The August meeting, we would further refine those ideas, and the September meeting, the finance committee would be equipped. Hopefully to kind of. Make intelligent, like, okay, here's the scope, because really, there's lots of times there's some tea leaves that need to be read, and you guys amazingly always get it right. So, kudos to you. You do.
So you're calling this basically a wish list reach?
Uh, well, to me, I think it's a little.
The way it's starting out, this is.
Okay, that's a way, when we're starting out, or we're saying think big, wish list.
That's what I mean, yes.
But I don't want it to just be think big, I want you to think small too. I want you to think, uh, now, things that we already have ongoing. Fourth of July budgeting, uh, Juneteenth budgeting, unless we're planning to expand those budgets. I, I'm not suggesting that we, we need to supply project proposals for those, okay?
Our listening session.
Our listening sessions. Exactly. And the ideas from those listening, so, exactly, so you've had a couple of listening sessions, you should. From that, I think you've cut, you had a bunch of terrific ideas.
And to work like a mini, uh, estimated budgeting type thing.
Yes. Correct, so you would wanna maybe, if you, if you need to do, I don't know that listening sessions will, or. Require budgets per se, because obviously we could include them in newsletters and stuff like that. From them, exactly. So. We need a way of planning projects, whether budget impacting or not, ensure that they get completed, oh, I, here's a perfect example from myself of something not getting completed. The spring newsletter. So this is something that I had on my plate. Ms. Kostick will, is nodding her head in affirmation. Uh, this is something that I had said, yeah, I'm gonna get it done, I'm gonna get it done, I didn't get it done. Cause I have too much on my plate. Well, if we're planning, for example, newsletters. You know, we can be, not only are we talking about budget, but we're talking about who's gonna be the point people for this, so that there may not be necessarily. A single point of failure, as was the case with me. But if someone realizes, okay, I'm swamped with the work of my day job right now, I'm gonna need to, you know. Get some backup for an issue of the newsletter, just a, just one practical example. Um.
So then, we become the project manager, cause that's all you're talking about.
Exactly right, okay, so what we're, that's right, so. And with these, with this process, my expectation would be. That we would come with our ideas. Um. One thing I don't, I, I haven't mentioned yet is, there is a simple form. That I have on our, um, I put it on the Borough's SharePoint site. Um. In about ten minutes, you all will be getting an email with links to that form. And I'm gonna pass around now with my horrendous ink job that you're loving, gonna barely be able to read, but. This is an example of, I did a proposal for, which you might pass them around. For replacing the computers, I already told you that we're gonna have to replace the computers. So you're gonna see how I filled out, if you're able to read the sticky thing. Basically, it starts off with a project title. A project description. I don't, oh, you got it all?
Well, that's.
Oh, okay, great. Project title, project description, urgency category, flip over to page two. I've got five urgency categories, must-have. Highly recommended, recommended, nice to have, huge possibility. So you need to select one of those when you're doing this. Naturally, that, that selection could potentially be a, a point of debate among council, whether it's. A highly recommended versus a must-have, or nice to have versus future possibility, that'll be something that we'll need to obviously, um, debate together. Estimated financial costs and estimated time commitment, so, we're really trying to capture. Um, what, what it requires, what type of investment is required. In order to get this particular, particular project to completion. A number six, proposed leads and support. I wrote the mayor and Borough manager would be responsible, but of course, it's gonna be mostly handled by go-to. Dependencies and timing consideration. Um, I'm mentioning that, uh, we need to try to have these computers in the first quarter as early as possible because of the. End-of-life, um, as they call it, the end-of-life support with Microsoft. And then, in additional notes, I just wrote, I'm thinking ninety-five hundred bucks in, in equipment costs and two thousand in setup costs. Now. Over the next three weeks. When you're writing up your projects, number one. Submit one project record per project, don't put all your projects in, you know, it's, it's kind of a pain, but. When you, after you submit it, it'll say, do you want to submit another one, just submit another one. For July, it can be rough. Just do, you know, do a Google search on financial costs, we don't need quotes, you know what I mean, for July. Obviously, maybe in August, we would want to drill down a little bit. And, you know, and have more reliable financial numbers, and then, of course, by September, we need real numbers. Right.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sorry.
The review of these forms.
So, that'll be next month.
But, but it's by.
Everyone. So, so I'm gonna bring these, so my expectation, my, I, what I'm putting in the email that you'll be getting in a few minutes is. Please complete these forms by June thirtieth, which is a Monday. The next day, I'll try to feverishly put it in a format that we'll all be able to ingest. And then we'll talk about it on. The caucus meeting on Wednesday, the second. Makes sense, and, and if, if we find that we have too many for the caucus meeting, we can prioritize them. Right, and we can potentially, you know, figure out a game plan for, you know, if things need to go to a specific committee to look at. Jointly, you know, most committees have. Yeah. Perhaps, we'll see how many we get. Yeah, and it's a good point. I don't know.
And then I.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I could be against a caveat is that I feel that we are handling this. I know what you're saying about Zellman.
Right.
But it's still busy.
Correct, amen. Okay, okay. Nonprofit, it's okay.
It's more of a service organization?
More of a service.
Two, four, five. With a little cushion.
Nonprofit with a cushion.
Okay, this is basically a summary of what I just stated. Um, can you pass that around, please? So, you can skip, you know, you can read this stuff at home, at your, at your leisure. At your leisure, right? Sure. That's what this process is aiming to achieve, so that some of us can have leisure in our life.
Oh, more.
So, the June caucus meeting, look at what that is, oh, we're having it now. The mayor presents this process and council and staff ask questions and provide feedback. That's this proposal introduction. July caucus meeting is the initial project ideas. As I said before the meeting, please brainstorm and really actually spend. Spend a couple of hours over the next three weeks actually thinking. What do, what does the streets need? There's an example of, and I don't know if this is streets or sewers, but there's two ridiculous lake situations that develop at the end of Bonsel. And Sycamore Avenues on West Providence Road. We'll talk that, that, that is, okay, maybe not a good example, maybe not, but I'm just thinking, maybe if they were all borough streets, that would be a good example. Okay, yes, ma'am.
So can we be a buddy? Oh, yeah, like. If I say the thing, I think we should do this, so we have one proposal.
One of you can, yeah, one of you could submit the proposal, for sure. So, brainstorm for project ideas and two, submit each of your proposals into the form. And then, at the July caucus meeting, council will have a preliminary discussion on viability and alignment. Number three, please come prepared to explain your project ideas, including cost, time, estimates, and urgency categorization and to answer any questions. Okay, so again, this is, next month, it's gonna be high level, it's gonna be, yes.
Is this outside of what? Like you already expressed the Fourth of July, your team, this is anything outside of what currently exists?
I would say yes, if there's anything new. Uh, or anything expanded. Yeah.
If you would be like tweaking or, or expanded on, say, you know.
The rec, the rec board wants to do.
I have possible project ideas at the bottom of the second page, if you want to look. New computers for staff, new police tools, new staff potentially. Online finance tools to replace QuickBooks, Peggy. Phone voicemail numbers for elected officials, Microsoft three sixty-five desktop for those who'll use it, orderly newsletters, speed humps. Wireless projector at the community center, lobbyist services, I'll explain that in just a second, for managing grant proposals. Fixing drainage issues on West Providence Road, replacing alert systems. Switch into the counties, Sue Kelly. We enrolled in August twenty twenty-three, and I believe it was a two-year, I think it was a one, an annual contract that order renewed, so my point is. Potentially, we could. End it in August, obviously, we would have to ensure that everyone who signed up, we could get them over. Uh, now. From what we've done now, exactly, now. I, I also gave an example of three, three things that are more of a time investment, less budget impacting. Complete a comprehensive policy, police policy review, now, I believe you said that this is under the purview of the Civil Service Commission?
No.
No, okay, so that might be something, that's the safety committee, not a vice president that we would, we would probably wanna put. Updating the ordinance for towing fees. Uh, do you remember that? Remember towing fees? So I'm saying, instead of us just saying, ah, that'll take ages. Maybe it will take ages, but maybe that's something we ought to consider as a. And it's, it's gonna probably require considering legal fees. Uh, you know, we're gonna have to think about the fact that, so apparently Ron, I don't know how familiar or with the whole towing fees thing, but it's, it's.
There's a thing.
It's, it's a thing, it's a complicated thing. Updating the website, now, Dan is gonna be shocked and relieved that I put this under the less budget impacting thing, because I'm not talking about. Replacing the website, I'm talking about, so as you can see, that's not me expanding the website or anything like that, that's me. This website needs some love. Some love, and that's probably something that I would propose. That I and some others work on jointly. So what questions do we have? I know this was a lot, but I think. It's gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna have what they call the hive mind. On the case, and it's going to, I think we'll come up with some. Some interesting ideas, and it'll be, you know, it'll, obviously it'll be transparent. And we will have the ability to. Deliberate on any concerns, you know, someone maybe comes with certain assumptions on what needs to happen and just assume it's gonna be in a budget. Well, now, we can ensure that it will or won't be in the budget, depending on what council decides.
Since we are, um. Type of advice already. Just for everybody, we're thinking pie in the sky, grants, things to get done, but being a little bit more realistic.
Uh, I would say for July, don't be realistic. I would say for July, cause there's plenty of us that are.
Everybody's not gonna get everything when they're wish.
No way.
It is a wish list.
It's a wish list, now, I, I wanted to explain one thing that I, I forgot, I glossed over, lobbyist services. Um, one thing that I actually heard from the, um. Eponymous John McLean, is that, did I use that word right? Center is eponymous, so John McLean and I had an extended conversation at the polls on primary election. And he mentioned, um, something that Clifton Heights. The service that they employ, which are lobbyist services, and I, I know, um, that this, I had heard from other municipalities that they do this. And it's about five grand a month, so it's a, an investment. But the whole idea is. It more than pays for itself, you know, you get potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars because they know how to write grants. And they also manage the grants, so you're not, they are the ones that will. Chase down documentation and all that, so that's gonna be something I propose, and I'll give more information, obviously, July and August on that, but. Something for us to consider, so, my, getting back to the pie in the sky stuff, it's worth kind of putting out there, cause you never know. You know, we had this terrific master plan for the parks.
Right.
You know, probably it would make some sense for us if we can get the grant, I'm not saying we would do it out of our general funds. But to try to put at least one of those parks closer to that master plan, we spent a long time, and the public spent a long time. Giving us feedback on that plan, it makes sense for us to try to not to dust it off and to start trying to make it reality. Yes, ma'am.
I would also, if you do know of a potential grant source, put it in your project request.
Absolutely.
Just got back from the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, and I collected enough stuff for everybody.
Thank you, Sue. That's great.
But anyway, I got all those sorts of stuff on grants for bridges, we can build it over the landstone.
Wouldn't that be great? That'd be cool.
That's great.
Well, it's all transparent, we'll all have, we'll all be able to put our input, but yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman Kelly.
We just meeting, uh, the topic of trying to freshen up, uh, veteran park.
Exactly. We have a plan for a veteran park.
Right.
And it would be a logical first one to work on, considering its. Visibility to the town, you know, people driving into the town. The Vegas of Delco.
That's it, yeah, yeah, we've got those steel machines in the conservation.
Any other questions? Uh, our finance team over here, any?
Just a couple.
Go.
Um, first of all, I think this is a very wise move, because I feel that each committee. Will feel that they have a say in the budget, like, and and we used to do this years ago when I was on council, they'd say. Your committee, you know, see what you want to do. I think it's a really great way to kind of fresh, you know, kind of get some new. Things that you haven't thought about for a long time, that maybe is for, but. I would like to remind everybody.
Yep.
That, as Scott said, we are kind of on a tight budget right now.
For sure.
We're just building a brand new building, which is a wonderful thing, but. We're gonna be paying that back for a while. So if you are coming up with these great ideas, if you can also come up with, like, cost-saving ways of. Achieving these goals, I think it would have a better chance for your project to be. I mean, and as far as the lobbyist thing goes. I think I understand where you're coming from with that, but just in the back of your mind, always remember. Admin costs and you, a lot of these grants you have to match.
Right.
And last year, I mean, between the engineering fees that will not be reimbursed. And the percentage of the grant that you have to pay, like, you know, have to show your good faith by putting up some money.
The money, chunk of money. And reimbursement takes sometimes two years.
Yes, and I would suggest.
For sure.
You know, and this is, you know, this is really council's decision and everything, but. When you do, if you do come up with, like, you decide you want to go for a grant or or something like that, or you want to go with those lobbyist people. Can't be, it can't be applied for sixty-eight grants in one year, you know what I mean? Like, I would say, maybe if you did, like, one or two grants, and just eventually you'll get to. To the triangle, or you'll get to, you know, I mean, into those parts of going according to that.
And I'll try to talk to their elected officials over there, and the John McLean, and find out, like, what, get more information on that, yeah, because. Right, I mean, it it sounds great, like, oh, you pay sixty grand, but you get six hundred thousand in return. That sounds wonderful.
Yes, and it does sound wonderful, but you gotta find that sixty.
You gotta look at the fine print, is that what you're saying?
We still haven't gotten reimbursed for the walk-in track, I'm still trying, and that's been complete.
Is like a dog with a bed with.
I know he is, but uncopy it on the emails.
Plus, he 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 makes sure, he'll say, hey, you gotta give me a copy of this council check, and I mean, I mean, so. He's submitting the things on a very timely basis. So that's all I would say about, you know, I think it's a great idea, though.
Thank you. Well, I can find, I doubt it.
Let's share their solicitor, that's.
Right. Their service, right. It would be like sharing a solicitor, you couldn't do that, you would have to pay your. Are we gonna share you, Ron, with someone? What's that? You represent Collidale, yeah, but we're not sharing you with Collidale. Let's be clear. Yeah, please.
But let's remember, we're not gonna get true numbers for the earned income tax until probably April of next year. After the fourth quarter, we'll have true numbers then to see where we are financially.
Right, correct. So all, all this is to say.
With us adding, you know, I say this. To the borough positives. When was the last time that we looked at cutting costs?
We do that every year.
Every year.
Every year. Internet provider. Well, not, not just that, but I mean, like, all of our contracts that we have, you know, so with Higgins and and. Like, all of these contracts, are they long-term, are they renewed, are they?
Well, unfortunately, labor goes up, it doesn't go down, it'll never go down, right?
But the, like, these are things.
Like the recycle, and we tried to recycle, and we found out that all of a sudden, we went from ten thousand a year to fifteen thousand to forty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
The more you put it out, the higher the number.
We put them out for bid over here, we, our trash contract is out for bid.
And and just so everybody knows. We have no contract coming up this year. We have a couple of contracts.
But, you know. I would say anything like that, if the, if you can have an idea. Even better, if it's a cost savings idea, but it's gonna be a project, let's, let's capture it.
Yeah, even look at each line item in the budget.
Right.
And say, okay, well, um, you know, I, and you, and. Highway for sure is is one that you can really look at, because we just got our check for our liquid fuels. Uh, money, which was about a hundred and seven thousand. Hey, guess what? I'm the one that's the transfer, so anyway. But, I mean. You could look at each one of those lines and see if there's a way, is there a charge in you too? Is there somebody else that could be doing a better job? But I think you have to wait till the contracts.
Yep.
Yeah, so. A very good idea, as much as you want to give, it takes some away, right?
And I just want to say, in particular to Councilman Walker and Councilwoman Blunt. You may be ending your term with us, but please. You know, you're in a special position of, you know, thinking about your areas, so, you know.
We're going pie in the sky.
You're going pie in the sky, Scott Walker, okay. On the way out the door. Two for the moon. A new castle, okay. Any other questions? I know I took up a lot of your time. Oh, thank you.
Mike.
Yeah.
Making comments.
Yes, Tom.
For the lobbyists. Uh, the mayor of Clifton Heights is also Clifton Heights representative on the Darby Creek joint authority.
Okay.
Through his recommendation, Darby Creek joint authority also uses, uh. This lobbying company.
The same one?
The same one. Now, he raised a point that I found interesting. And the more boroughs that we use this lobbying, there's more competition within each borough. Because of the same full load.
Yeah, we may not want to use that lobbying company. Because, you know, they, we, we might worry that they'll tip the scales in favor of one of their favorite boroughs. And maybe we wouldn't be that one, so.
Mr. Morse, let me ask, when did you hire this company, this year or previously?
I know it was like last year.
So it's only been a year, have you seen any, have you seen anything yet for them? Okay.
Well, you're paying five thousand a month. So be prepared in January, we hire. To submit.
Um, that concludes my report, Mr. President. Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you very much. You're welcome. I know you put a lot of work into that. Uh, Borough Manager, Mr. White.
Thank you. I am pleased to report, and I did give it to our treasurer today, that our liquid fuels money did come in. In the amount of one hundred and eight thousand four forty-seven seventy-four. And just so everybody knows, liquid fuels money is what we use for the road programs. Pays for our streetlights, it can pay for our salt for winter plowing, et cetera, so. Uh, it sounds like a hundred and eight thousand's a lot, but if you add up everything we go through with. You know, with our lighting, even though we went to LA, they.
I have to go into the.
Yep, so it's nice, but, you know, it's not like we get a surplus and we have extra. Okay, municipal building update, phase two has started. All the demo work inside. The original building is now complete, believe it or not. Framing of ex, interior walls are, were completed this morning. The rough plumbing and electrical are well underway. Exterior brick has started. Block has started inside, so they're already six feet up on some of the block walls. Sidewalk has been replaced on Providence Road. Pop soil is complete. It is graded, it is seeded, and the hay is installed. So with all the rain we had last week and the warm weather coming, it's gonna pop pretty quickly. We cannot take the fence down until it has seventy percent grass. So that actually, believe it or not, if we get a little more rain and heat in the next week, that could be, uh, by the time we meet in two weeks, the fence. Potentially could be down.
Wow.
Okay, here's the update on the replacement of the roof panels, they are in. Uh, they're just waiting on the scheduled date. They will only remove what they can replace the same day. They are not gonna be stored at on site. So the first day, if they decide they're gonna do ten feet, it's no problem. They took it off, they're only gonna do ten feet, if they think they can do twenty feet, they're gonna bring twenty feet worth, et cetera. So the general public most likely would not even notice it, because it's, looks like you're just working on the roof. But if you want an idea of what they should look like. If you go look at the Alden Elementary School roof, they also have a metal roof. If you notice in between each set of ribs, there's two small ribs. You're not, you didn't even notice, because it's nice and brown. You know, if you happen to come up with a municipal building, I'm glad to take you through, and I'll show you exactly what I'm talking about, because you get a clear view of what it was. Far as who made the mistake, it's not our problem. We paid for this, this is what we're getting. If there's any issues, it is between the architect, uh, and the contractors. You know, it's who said what, or what's supposed to be expected, that's not our problem. That's why we pay for an architect to do all the workless. And I think that's it, Dan, unless I forgot something.
Uh, would you have a tree updated about the trees?
So, yeah, so some of the tree work has already started. Uh, they pulled out a heck of a lot of pine needles and debris from underneath the Christmas tree. They also injected with, I forget what it was called, I know I read it off a couple of weeks ago. To basically make the tree more healthy, to stabilize it, et cetera. Uh, they already took down the huge tree behind Jeffrey Avenue that was probably on a. Forty-five degree angle, I mean, it was pretty good. Now, the roots were really good on it, and we had three different arbers looking and saying, it's okay. We took it down because it was getting to a point where a huge windstorm. Or, uh, just a lightning storm or something, we could be in trouble, and thank goodness we did, because when it came down. Just like some of, a lot of our trees around here, it was hollow on the inside. We have the same thing right, actually, right beside the building, Steve McFarlane took down one. Couple of years ago, and last year, the year before, we took one down. Uh, right outside the Legion, right, at the end of the street, it was huge. It was basically, they're hollow on the inside. So thank goodness we did it when we did. Uh, the pool is scheduled to be done at this point, rescheduled for Monday. Uh, they know it has to be done by Wednesday, or they're not going to. Get an opportunity to do it until the end of the year, until the season's over. Talking about the pool, there's, actually, there is a, kind of like a sinkhole. In, what is it, the Grancy area where the pumps are, Dan, is that how you would describe it?
Well, it's in the back where they have playground, near the, near the apartment complex back there.
So I met with the engineers from Kelly, I actually met with the owner, JP, and Cleaver, and we kind of come up with a solution. We're just looking for cost. The problem is the, the wall is eroding away from a lot of the storms that we're getting up in. Uh, a lot of water all at once, which gives a lot of pressure and power to it, it's washing away or undermining the wall that was there. So eventually, what happened is there's a sinkholes developing in the play area in the swim club. So I know you guys have all seen.
Below?
It's actually, right, right where Shaco's is. You know, there's like a six or an eight or a ten-foot opening there, because the water's underground as soon as it comes out there. But it's in the very back, it's not the playground by Willows. It's the play area behind the basketball courts in the swim club.
Okay, yeah.
All, all the way in the back.
Yeah, it's like the northwest corner of the property, I guess.
Yeah.
So the solution, it looks like, as we've all seen, uh, you'll see a two-by-two, two-by-four, two-by-six. Stack of bricks and a wire and all meshed up. They would align it with that, and the reason they would use that instead of solid, because with the solid wall, which is what we have. With all these storms, you get hydraulic pressure, which is pressing against it. Eventually, you know, it starts to run away. With this, there's so many crevices in there, the water will actually filter through it.
Yeah, I think they call them gabions.
Something, I I forget the exact name, but as soon as you mentioned, I knew what he meant.
Yeah, 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 they put them down along the Mecklenburg Babys Creek.
Correct. So, I think that's all I have.
Just so that people know, that, you have a question? Just so that people know the history, when, when the intersection of Five Points was done, there's, there's a huge basin in there. And, uh, Pendot did it. And there were baffles where the water came out, but it's at a forty-five degree angle to the wall. And over the years, they've actually done work to repair it, but the last time that the swim club requested it, they said they're not gonna do it anymore. And the way they fixed it was they would put stakes in the creek on the other side of the wall. And drop bags of concrete, and the concrete would then solidify in the water. And there's multiple spots along there where they've already done that. But this seems like a more reasonable solution, because they will, they won't, they won't fix it anymore, even though it's, the baffles have worn away. That was supposed to slow the water down before it hit the wall over time, so that's why we were in the position we're in now. Any other questions for the Borough Manager? I do have one. Mr. White, when are they doing the curb that they missed when they were doing the sidewalks?
They weren't even supposed to do the sidewalk yet. That was a contractor trying to get out of town, he knew he had to tear it up, so he's gonna have to come back.
And he did it before Memorial Day, and unfortunately, he didn't get it finished before Memorial Day, while the service.
I, I can tell you right now, Mr. Anis was not one to happy either. He's the superintendent, who's basically Western NCI and. You know, he's done a great job, and he was up just as upset as we were, Dan.
Alright, well.
Uh, but talking about sidewalks, I actually, I got, uh, a couple of quotes for the sixteen blocks in front of our building. So, you know.
There's other blocks closer that have been disrupted because of the tree there, and it's our responsibility to take care of that, because. We have to do the property adjacent to the municipal building. What was the final bid that came in on that?
I think I was forty-six hundred, which was the cheapest, which wasn't bad for six, eighteen blocks.
No, the one you gave me before was about three hundred bucks a block.
Yeah, and then some of them, when I first answered, could be five, if you're doing one or two blocks yourself, it's five hundred bucks. Obviously, it's municipality, they want to get our business. Um, I put one against the other, you know, gave this price, can you match it, et cetera, so I think we got a pretty good price. This is not something that we have to bet the bid or anything, because we're nowhere near the threshold. I don't have to call the telephonic bids, but I did anyway, so I think we got a pretty good deal there. I guess the question is, when do I feel like we should be doing this? I want to get the project.
Well, obviously, after school is out.
Yep.
And before school starts.
Well, I'm.
Because we have.
I'm gonna try to get it before the Fourth of July, but after school gets out, we'll give it a little time. Like, as soon as the fence comes down, Dan, which is seventy.
We also have a problem in the back with, I thought that fence was staying up until we had some sort of a railing back there, because of the, the kids crossing over.
At this point, they have it fenced off, so you can't get up.
I understand, but I'm, they're gonna, that's gonna stay up until we have a solution for that, right?
Solution would be, we, we need a railing there.
Hmm, well, we're gonna have to.
And we have to have something in the back, because Alden Elementary being an autistic support school. The kids play out back, and when you see an opening of any building, becomes a hide-and-seek playground area.
Oh, dear.
You know, and we have equipment, and we just cannot have this. I, I mean, I don't know how it got missed by the architect, but, I'm sorry, but it did. And it's gonna be on us, so we have to put some type of gate there for.
Where the, uh, that's where the generator is and.
Where the generator.
It's on the front, right?
It's on the side.
On the side.
But we also have to do something along the back, we put a railing up before, keep the kids from coming right up to the building, I mean.
Yeah.
God bless the kids, but they would be kicking, sitting, kicking on the door, banging, you know.
Looking in the windows.
Well, now we have windows, I mean.
Right.
If, if I told you how many times a day somebody was coming up to my window and knocking and looking in, and, you know, I'm sitting there. So, it was ridiculous, so I finally. So, it was ridiculous, I finally had to get John in it. I said, you have to put a fence so they can't get up this far, at least give me a temporary. Well, I mean, it's something.
Mister White, all day long, you have a conference call. Any other questions for the borough manager, Mister Borders?
At the end of the alley, where we took down that leaning tree, it looks like there's a stone damaged tree, is that ours?
That is not ours, if you look, the stake, at least it was, when I went back there and looked. We had a survey, that stake is still there, that is the property, whoever's the last one. Maybe it's six oh one, whatever, that very last one where he cut the black fence.
Okay.
That's his property, it's not ours. Thank goodness, we had that survey a couple of years ago, cuz it's still there.
Yeah.
The stake.
Is, since it's overhanging that public right away, has he been notified that it needs to be taken care of?
Well, I went by there yesterday, and I noticed Pico was up there, don't work as well.
Okay.
They were in the back with their trucks, I don't know if they were trimming the trees back, cuz it was affecting their lives, but someone was doing work yesterday.
Yeah, they were out on Providence Road doing something with that switch box.
Okay, well, they went from there to the back, right where that tree is, they were up there.
No, if, if he, if it hasn't been taken care of, he probably should be notified that it should.
Well, somebody cut it all up, and it's all on his property at this point.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if Mark cut it up to get it out of the way, or the homeowner did it, but it's not in the roadway.
Okay.
Right away.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, uh, our solicitor is Mister Cole here, again, sir.
I, I, I don't have anything for the group.
We are gonna advertise for our two.
Yes, we are.
The next meeting?
Yeah, I planned to send it into the paper tomorrow morning.
Okay, excellent. Any questions, seeing none, moving on, treasurer. Other than a hundred and eight thousand.
But um, I did wanna say, um, since our last meeting, my last report, um, we have uh. Deposits of um, fifty-three hundred dollars in our, we are today. On three thousand one, the fifteenth of May, uh, eighteen hundred on the twenty-second and. Twenty-eighth of the month, we got five hundred dollars, and I just got notified today that um, there's another deposit coming for eight hundred. So it'll be a total sixty-one hundred that I should be able to put on that report for.
Well, we're not sure whether that's people from the first, cuz they told us that it's gonna take until June, until, wait a minute. April, May, then March, April. It won't be until the end of this month that the first quarter will be completely.
So.
Set, and, and we know we got some money, we don't know whether that second quarter money that's being submitted or first quarter money. Like John said, we really won't know until the end, the end of the first quarter next year is how we are. It's, we're ahead of where we thought we would be, but we don't know if it's gonna stay that way.
Right.
So, that, and that's really, um, that last, uh, the end of this month is the end of the face value tax period.
Uh, the only issue I'm trying to resolve it now is I do not have an outside mailbox in the new building. People have been coming up, and they are complaining, and they're right, so we have been waving some of the double fines, etc., because. There's no place to put it, so. I'm trying to come up with a resolution of what to do.
She said, Deb said you can't cut the window, and she doesn't know.
Can't cut the window, right, we tried doing that, it didn't work. So I don't know, well, if, if, Dan, if we wanna extend it to somebody who comes up and says I tried paying it, although it does say on there to pay. At shared bank.
Says it pays either at the bank or mail within, yeah.
Right, but you're gonna get a couple of residents gonna say, I tried coming up and paying it, there's no place to put it.
Well, we'll cross that bridge and come, I thought there was a solution that we were gonna be able to put.
I, I think so, I didn't wanna bring it up yet, I'm just waiting till I.
Okay. Alright.
Oh, the Legion, the Legion took it back.
Okay.
Okay, they're both over at the Legion, and they're gonna bring over the bright red one. So hopefully, people will realize it's not a real mailbox, and they'll stop putting ballots and mail and tax forms and.
So are you gonna keep it at the Legion?
No, there's two, there's two boxes.
Now, there's two over there, so there, there, there's.
Seven, then you have the one that was up there, you have them both at the Legion right now.
Correct, so the ratty silver one that was up there, that's back at the Legion, and there's a nice bright shiny red one, that they're gonna put back up there. And I've been trying to convince the boosters, uh, as a service project, in addition to doing, redoing all the, the landscape timbers. Uh, that we get that mailbox painted, so we can put those banners on it and stick it out.
Say, this is not a mailbox.
Right.
Right, no mail, no ballots.
They, they.
They're going too quick.
Are you bolting it down? Now that there's a pad there? Gonna cinch you then?
I don't know, that, that wasn't prescribed.
But on that note, if you are gonna bolt it down, are you gonna bolt it to the side? So when you put these letters to Santa Claus, it can also go on the pad?
It's set for, it's, it's designed to hold more than one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the answer to that is. Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on, chief, other than our new hire, what do you have? And the computer's running out in October, what else?
Wait till you see my wish list.
Oh dear. Well, the, the mayor, the mayor kinda had part of your wishlist already down there.
Actually, not so much a wishlist, more of a need list, um. So we have our new vehicle in, the Silverado is in, uh, it's in our parking, our parking lot. Uh, so it's, uh, it's gonna be going out next week to get striped up. Um, we still have an MDT to have to, has to go in, I'll be picking that up hopefully tomorrow from. And I'm in one center, then I have scheduled out to go out to KML, uh, to get that, uh, put in. Um, but nevertheless, once we get it back from striping, it's gonna be put in service, even without the MDT. Uh, for a little bit, cuz sometimes our MDTs, which is our mobile data units inside the police car, the computers, sometimes they go down, and we have to. As I like to tell our officers, go old school, how I used to have to do it, and actually write it down on a piece of paper, the address. Kind of the call, when we didn't even have computers or anything.
Heaven forbid.
Yeah, yeah, you know, they wanna put the cars down, cuz the computer doesn't. That's not how it works. So uh, so that's gonna be in service, um, hopefully real soon. Uh, our new reporting system, we are scheduled for training next week, next Monday and Tuesday, possibly Wednesday. Uh, we're projected to go live with our new recording system on Wednesday. Um, so, uh, I know I had been in touch, sent an email to Shalonda. In order to have go to, who I believe they signed, assigned a technician to deal with CSI Technologies, which is the new recording system. See if there's anything, uh, at all that is gonna be required. For that, uh, but as of right now, like I said, we're scheduled to have training, we're gonna have, um. Training on Monday, uh, morning at nine AM, uh, this is mandatory training for everyone in a department. Uh, followed by a second session training, which will be around one, and then, uh, training Tuesday evening. Uh, for our night shift officers and officers that are working nights out of offering, so. They're coming off shift that morning and having to hang around till nine AM, and then have to go through training.
That'd be horrible.
You know, it's, that's kinda hard, so, uh, if all goes well. Um, the representative from CSI Technologies will be at our department, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and possibly half the day Friday. Case there's any glitches, any, any issue through, so. Uh, so we'll be up, running on that.
So, um, did you, forgive me, I kind of was distracted when I tuned in, so I'm not sure, I don't think you said it. Did, did you mention, uh, about data migration timeline?
So, uh, it's projected that the data migration, once we go live, the data migration usually takes place. And can be completed about a month after, so about a month, month and a half, if everything goes well.
Uh, so we'll keep them both systems in parallel.
Yeah.
For be able to handle, and I guess, service old records. Did they, did they specify, did they give any kind of a? Date? When there should be no further updates in the old system?
Um.
You know, and not new, obviously, new records will go in the new system, but the old system, I would think, sometimes you need to update records, don't you, or is that?
Yeah, well, so, it's to my knowledge, uh, they did a test, um, dat, a test migration. Uh, they're engineers, um, and I know GoTo was kinda involved in that a little bit, uh, so. I didn't hear of that there was any issues with it, so projected, I mean, other than when they said roughly thirty days or, or a month and a half for. Complete data migration, but they didn't give it any necessary, like, any update that would need to have to take place with the old system. Or anything like that, so. Yeah, it's something that come next week, I could probably get a little bit more information when they're.
Yeah, just find, just ask him specifically on like, okay, what exactly is the process gonna be? As far as how long we can continue to, you know. S- or maintain. The, this, that, you know, how long, yeah, how long are we gonna be working in parallel? Um, and then I'm guessing probably what they'll do is, there's gonna be a hard lock date, that's like the day before the data migration. When no changes can be made in that. Old. Right, in existing stuff, so just maybe if you could find out and ask them if they could put that in emails that you could share with me.
Absolutely.
Um, and then we're gonna find out, you're, you're looking into CGS requirements for, so basically, we got an estimate, Mister President, for. Um, you know, so we have a server that we wanna get rid of. At the local, fifteen hundred dollars.
I thought we were going up in the cloud and off of the.
Right, right, but, but the, the old server. Um, we got an estimate to, to send it to heaven. Sixteen hundred dollars.
What does that mean, send it to heaven?
To retire it, so I'm, I'm asking the chief, well.
Do that for nothing.
That's, okay, well, so this is the question. This is the question.
Well, does it have?
Can we with the CGS?
Does it have to be wiped because it's?
Exactly, so that's what we're gonna find out.
Probably has to be done by, yeah, by somebody that's.
Years and years.
We have to do, let's, we're a government, we have to do it.
Years and years ago, when I was in a, uh. The, a place where we had fears that we were closing down. I know the guy came in, and then it was, he had to overwrite it twenty times now, it's.
Right.
And it, that is probably not sufficient.
Yeah, right, right.
But back then, that was enough to block and let them have new data go into the computer as we sold them, I'm sure they're gonna have to. Scour that to make sure that it's got nothing to, and what happens to it after that, does it get destroyed?
So what I'm hoping, and it's probably pie in the sky, but that we could, um, if. You know, that we could just handle it internally with our, with.
No, but I'm saying, once it's wiped, what happens, we should just destroy it.
We'll destroy it, okay.
Okay.
I'm bug it.
That's, well, see, I don't know, because of the nature of the data that was on the drive, maybe the drive itself.
I don't know.
Maybe if you remove the drive and destroy the drive, then the server itself could be mute.
Maybe, whatever.
Right. Right, right. Did you? Thank you, chief.
Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it, that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief?
I will say that the new vehicle is substantially larger than the SUVs, so I guess our gas bill's gonna be going up.
It, it depends, I mean, I, I will say this, I mean, it is a lot, it has a lot more room in it.
I noticed that.
In the, uh, in the. Operators and front passenger area, even with the partition in it, it has a lot more room in the back. For prisoners, as opposed to our vehicles now. That, if, if people are thin, it's easy, when people are not, and it's hard. And, um, especially getting them in and out, usually we have to have them in sideways. And if they're combative, it's a very small space.
When you say a partition, you mean a partition between the driver, there's not a partition in the back between the.
Well, in our SUVs, there are. In our SUVs, there's, there's also a partition from the backseat to the back cargo area.
Oh, then the back cargo area, but I mean, you could pull a combative person through from one door to the other, right?
Cause I've. Yes, and in our, in our current SUVs, the area is, obviously, I mean, cuz they're, they're just smaller, the area is extremely tight.
Right, but I, I've seen these, I've seen these body cam things, you know what I mean, with my body cam, where you see, and for some bizarre reason, I guess. They expect to have two people in the vehicle at a time, they have a partition, but then if someone's going berserk. You, you don't have that advantage of being able to.
No, no, I think what you're referring to is, so when I say the partition, it's between the front seat pa, uh.
Driver, right.
The rear seat.
And the prisoner.
There are, there are partitions where it is actually, they have that partition, plus one that goes in the middle, that separates. People in the backseat.
Right.
We don't have that, so.
Good.
Uh, for, for that reason, but like I said, the, the interior of the Silverado. Is, is a lot more roomy, and it was actually a lot easier for the equipment mounting. And, uh, it just gives you a little bit more room in there, and then the backseat area, which.
For your plus size prisoners.
Yeah, and for, listen, for also for officers that are taller, and officers that maybe, you know, everyone that are in different gamuts of. Fitness, uh, you know, uh.
Excuse me, on our force, they're all off of their game.
Um, whatever, you know, but it is a lot more room, it is more comfortable, uh, mounting the equipment, it's not as crammed in. Uh, and so that's, that's really nice, which is the same with the Tahos, you see a lot of Tahos now, out in police departments and everything. Uh, which is the reason why a lot of departments went that way, it just gives you a lot more room, uh, for equipment. For officers, employees, and then also the prisoners, so.
Great. Very good.
Thank you very much, chief, any other questions, seeing none, moving on, finance, Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. And the only thing I have is, um, well, a couple of, hopefully, preparations. Like, what I was discussing with some other people on council, is. Who do we need to notify about the cleanup, if Johnny, was this really messy and trashy? And you had the window on the block.
Old passion. That would be code department, okay. And is it still that way, cuz they were notified very recently about it, and that they get cleaned up.
They did get cleaned up.
But if you're telling me it's back again.
There's still some.
So, so what, what we should do, and tell me if this is not feasible, but I think it seems like it should be feasible. We should tell him in a way not required, and then if, if it needs to, maybe we should make it an ordinance. That he has to put in some trash cans in there, cuz he had trash cans for years and years and years, and then suddenly. I suppose, because it requires someone to go around and collect the trash, he decided he wasn't gonna do that anymore. And people need no excuse to litter.
Let me talk to Tony.
Okay.
Uh, my first thought here would be, let's just cite.
Yeah.
Let him come back to us. It's just, it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, people go out to their cars, could care less, but they do have a parking lot, and they're supposed to maintain it, so. Let me talk to Tony, we'll see about it, we just cite him, and then maybe they'll hire somebody.
They used to street.
Yeah.
Did they, every night?
Yeah, there was a street trip, and they'd come by about midnight or so, come down and do.
No, this is on the grass, this is where the, where Hallmark.
Where it's blowing. I mean.
It probably starts in the lot and blows.
So it's no different than your house, you live on Providence Road, stuff blows into your house, you're responsible, so. Buddy, you know, so. I, I'll talk to Tony about it, and we'll. Hopefully, I have an answer for you in two weeks.
And the other question I had, we talked about this a while ago, was the, the tickets that we give out. Did they ever come to a resolution that it can't be like a whole lot of money that there's a cap on it?
The towing? Oh, yeah, look, no, we.
We don't have an ordinance, they are by state law mandated to only go to a certain level, and they actually exceeded that level, and I know. Uh, some of the people took them to court, and they won, they won at the court level, because if you. One of the reasons we haven't gone forward with that ordinance is because it's very detailed, the one from Springfield is what, like ten pages long, cuz I know Kate looked at it. And if the state law says if you don't have one, they can't charge more than X, and they were charging more than X. So, the, the towing company was being over the top, and.
Cut back?
Well. No, so in other words, just those people who sued one.
Correct, but then. Well, they challenged it in court.
They, they went and said.
They upheld our ordinance.
Right, and they said, because we don't have an ordinance, the state law takes effect, and you can't charge them five hundred dollars, you can only charge them, I don't know, it's fifty or a hundred.
You have to challenge it.
Yeah. But every individual, so that, that sign is the same dollar amount on the sign, the court didn't require them to change what they were charging?
No, because it was the individual, it wasn't a.
That's obnoxious. But they're in violation.
But that's, that's, that's what the judge is for.
That would be something that I think we should put as a project, and we can debate who does it, how much we do and all that, but I think if you wanna put it, do it.
I think the dollar amount is there to discourage people if they see that they're parking for five hundred bucks, and they're gonna say, oh, maybe I shouldn't really park. Well, they discourage it, yeah, cuz there's not many. They really should have given them a warning. They really should have given them a warning notice before they did it, but they, according to the chief, they've done this in the past where they. Go lax and then all of a sudden they come down hard on people. So.
Yes.
No, seatbelt, picket or clicket week, right, like. There's a concerted focus on it with the police officers, I think they're probably kind of dissimilar is. Okay, this is getting out of hand, let's make sure we buckle back down and make sure this is. Reminding people now.
Shoppers will probably complain in that they didn't have parking spots. Hey, that is, any other questions? Thank you very much. Councilman Borders, Public Works, what do you got?
President, uh uh got four areas uh that. Were monitoring. You know, for depressions. Uh one at uh on East Magnolia, uh that's uh been stacked up to an emergency and hopefully we can get that.
I saw the cones there today.
And yeah, I saw it was all marked out and everything. Uh so that's, you know, in the process, I guess, of being repaired. Uh there's Greenwood and Walnut, uh. A D U wants to do an investigation on that because apparently there. There seems to be a lateral, but they don't know where it's coming from, so they have to get.
That was typical in that in that area.
Yeah, so they didn't know whether it's like a spare lateral that's not hooked up, so. They they wanna get, get a hold of some of the adjacent neighbors and see if they can put, do a di test. Uh via their toilets. North Bonsel near Wayne, uh there's a depression uh that we're monitoring and as well as West Wayne over near Silver. Uh that just appeared.
I didn't see that one, the other, the other three I saw. Did you have an opportunity to speak to the resident? On two hundred West Wayne with that invoice that they were like paying.
I I knocked on their door a couple of times, I didn't answer, so I'm probably just gonna write a letter. Please forgive the formality of this letter, I tried to, you know, I tried to deliver this to you personally, but here's your copy of the bill.
Okay. If you don't get anywhere, let me know, we're gonna send it to the Borough Office.
Okay.
I just thought you wanted to give them the good news that.
Yeah, yeah. Or I think, yeah, it's a couple of times, I might have been wearing my booster hat or something like that, when I knocked on the door and.
They thought you wanted money or something.
Gotta get a borrow.
Yeah.
And uh that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, any questions for the councilman? I had one, John, I thought you told me that the one that's the emergency, they actually saw that it was our main was broken. It's already marked up, they knew exactly what it was immediately, it was already scheduled for Friday. Um Steve sent me pictures, I sent it right to Cleaver, I said, anyway, you can push this up till tomorrow.
Okay.
But either way, I mean, there's a cone on there right now.
Yeah, there's two cones on there when I drove by tonight. Which is good, cause the depression's gotten worse.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I guess it was almost as big as a basketball.
Okay, any other questions, seeing none moving on, Public Health, Councilwoman Kelly, fresh from her. Tour of Harrisburg.
Hershey.
Hershey, I'm sorry, yes.
Did you bring us back candy?
That was the gift we got. It looks too pretty. I have a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five, setting fees for the application for peddling and soliciting.
Uh there's a motion for a pass Resolution twenty twenty-five oh five, setting fees for application for peddling and solicitation. We passed the ordinance at the last meeting, but we did not, we neglected to put the fees schedule in there, and the ordinance said it would be by resolution. Is there a second to that motion? Councilman Borders, a second, uh any discussion, we've talked about it before, no, seeing none, all those in favor?
Are the dollar amounts set?
Yes. Yeah, they're in the resolution.
Just so you, one day is fifty dollars, seven days is a hundred and twenty-five. Thirty days is two fifty and three months is five hundred. In line with most of our neighbors and.
And they have to have an ID, lanyard, show their picture all the time, so if you see anybody knocking on doors, and I saw a guy selling phones or some phone line. I told him, you can't do that with that, where's your, where's your license? So.
I I had someone at my door. Each Saturday, obviously, my doors were there, and they were trying to sell the the uh doorbell, the camera doorbell.
Oh, there is one? Right.
It was a fabulous conference, if you haven't been, you should go. Lots of really cool networking. Lots of fabulous food. But the classes were were great, lots of good information, so definitely was worth the trip. Thank you for that, Ethan.
And most importantly, who took care of little Boo?
Her usual two, her overnight babysitter and her daytime walker.
Okay. Oh dear.
So, but thank you as events, my report.
Thank you very much, any questions for the councilman?
The motion was made, it was a second by?
Buddy, Councilman Borders.
Thank you.
Okay, uh we're moving on the highway, Councilman Walker.
Hey, first off, we have a motion to award innovative construction for the twenty twenty-five road program in the amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
There's a motion on the floor to award innovative construction for the twenty twenty-five road program in the amount of forty-five nine ninety-three point seven five. Is there a second to that motion, Councilwoman Blunt? We had the discussion at the last meeting about the bids, and this was the lowest responsible bidder. So any other questions, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, any opposed? Good, go ahead, sir.
So we had a bit of a drainage issue, uh water main.
No, he did not.
Okay, so on Ridley and Providence, uh a couple of days ago. Sunday. Sunday morning.
Seven thirty in the morning.
Yep, there was a water main break upon Ridley and Providence, uh which was actually turned off quite quickly. So if you do walk on Ridley at the corner there where uh. Triangle Park is, Edmonton's Park.
Yeah, Providence Place.
Providence Place, yeah, there is, uh you'll, you'll see some. I'm gonna call it damage, but, you know, the road has been disrupted, but right now, everything is working fine. Two days ago, there was a transformer fire on Magnolia in Oak, and power was lost to some of our residents. But that came back quickly, I didn't know what it was, our power kept flicking on and off, I don't know if anybody else experienced that. Yeah, well, I looked on Delco Dispatch, cause I was like, I don't know what's going on, and there was a transformer fire. When I looked outside, fire.
Oh gosh, when was this, what day?
Yeah, Monday, Monday.
Early in the morning. I heard about it. Right, mine too, but it was restored pretty quickly, they told me. In the future, if you call Pico with emergency, they, somebody told me that there were about. Five thousand people that were impacted, so the more people that are impacted, faster they get to prepare, yeah. All I know is I have it stored in my phone, it hits a button.
News, uh you know, more closer to to me near my neighbor, actually took down two giant trees that were causing issues, so. Uh what were were nuisances now are gone, and I'm realizing the loss of trees also increases our electric bill. Provide so much shade.
Oh wow.
But uh so that, so that's good, uh because there were lives that were completely fallen off. So that's, that's uh helpful. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, any questions for the councilman? I only have one notification, the mayor sent me, but I had heard from other people, do we have an update on when they're actually gonna do Clifton Avenue?
They already started, they mailed it today.
They did mail it today, I hadn't been over there, okay, good.
Actually, the mayor's one who told me.
Isn't that crazy?
Cause I didn't believe.
He doesn't believe me anytime. Who did you contact that thought that it was already done, was it Pendot or was it, or was it Pico?
Our external affairs manager came out. From Pico.
From Pico.
Came up the street and she's the one who pushed it finally to.
He thought it had already been done.
She couldn't believe it wasn't done.
Yeah, cause it's been over a year, they weren't working on that, okay, good. Any other questions, seeing none, moving on, Law and Order, it's Councilwoman Blunt.
And I would like my motion to allow the all youth club, use of the athletic fields on Sunday, June the twenty-second.
There's a motion to allow A Y C to use the athletic fields on Sunday the twenty-second is for an all-star game. That they're gonna have, uh which is the only date that you could get everybody together, is there a second to that motion? Councilman uh Walker, and he's got, they, they're gonna be using the fields up here, and they know they can't start before two o'clock because the church. Has the legion, which means they won't have any parking for cars, so that's what I've been told by the, by the president that they're gonna start after two. Uh any other discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, okay, you can let the youth club know that they're good to go. Anything else, Councilwoman?
Uh Fourth of July planning. Next meeting is the sixteenth.
Any uh any questions for the Councilwoman? Seeing none, moving on, Public Safety, Councilwoman Lambert.
Thank you, Mister President, I have a motion to extend the declaration of disaster emergency for thirty days.
Uh there's a motion on the floor to extend the declaration of disaster emergency for thirty days, as discussed about the ambulance service, cause the crows are closing. Is there a second to that motion, Councilwoman Kelly? Uh all those in favor? All right, any opposed? We, we don't know if there's gonna be any reimbursement, but if we don't have one, we don't get any money, so that's the reason why it's, it's out there. Sure. As our, you're, you put your hat on as our emergency management coordinator, not as a council.
Mister President, did the eyes have it?
Go ahead, Council, Vice President Lambert.
Thank you, Mister President, um one thing is that June is Gun Violence Awareness Month. And that even though it, you think it doesn't affect all, I know for me, this is um. Second year after my grandson was killed. Uh in June, in twenty. And one of the things I thought was interesting, that that the color is orange. And there is actually for Friday and over the weekend, um for, I guess, notification to wear orange. Um and anytime during the month, but it says that orange was the color chosen to be worn, because it's typically the color. Used by hunters to alert others uh not to shoot. And so now for the past nine years, people across the nation have worn orange on the first Friday of June. Um to honor those who have been the victims or the survivors of gun violence, cause it's not just the victims, the families as well. Uh the Juneteenth planning is in the final stages, so we have some good things that are um planned. Um playbook to Mister White and Dever for the alert on what needs to be um used for the payments coming in for, for the vendor. And. For the um information, the mayor's gonna be working, make sure that gets out, and the committee's working. And um we have our flyers ready to go up in different places, I think, um Mrs. Guss for that. And for the reports that I have for the um. Police and for the um. Emergency, I have that for council.
Madam Vice President, the the mailer went out today.
I was gonna say, when the mailer was supposed to have been. Maybe mailed. But I know it's already printed.
I I should have, I'm sorry, I didn't email you that, to let you know, that was just today, yep.
And with that, we have new event signs, thank you, again, Mister White. For that, that we can put up to say when events are happening and point, there seems to be, I know we experienced that. When there are victims in community center, people, when they get to Schittler and they see no outlet, they think this is not the right place. So hopefully we'll be able to resolve that, and also I uh spoke with uh Chief today, got some valuable information on. Some of the things that are going on with the police department, so thank you. And that completes my report.
Thank you very much, any questions for the Vice President? See, none, um. Moving on, all upcoming meetings will be held here in the John P McLean Community Center. Civil Service Commission will meet here on Wednesday, June eleventh, seven thirty, the Planning Commission will meet here Thursday, June twelfth, at seven thirty. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee, who met last night, uh in an intermediary meeting, will meet here on the seventeenth, I would have to say they're doing a lot of excellent work. Uh I was there and the mayor was there as well. Uh Council regular meeting will be June eighteenth, um. At which time we'll be having not only the Juneteenth proclamation, but all the swim club is celebrating their seventieth year. That will be uh honoring them as well. Uh our caucus meeting is on the second of July at seven thirty, and the rec board is next scheduled to meet on Monday, the fourteenth at seven. And as mentioned, the Fourth of July meeting is here on the sixteenth at seven, is it? So we meet at seven? Uh I think that covers all of our meetings. I don't think I missed anybody. Any privileges of the floor?
Mister President, just one thing I forgot to mention with my report, when you go in to submit your thing, you're gonna have to sign in with your. Borough email credentials.
What's that mean?
So your password, you know, so.
My gosh.
Yeah, I, listen.
My password is like this long that they gave.
Well, that's, don't you have to keep it? Save it somewhere, it's a copy and paste. So, so, and hopefully, maybe if you logged on to a browser before. Um then you'll be able to do it there, I recommend not doing it on your phone, but you know, you could do it on your phone, but it'd be a pain in the neck to type things. So.
Yeah.
That password, I think, I think I changed it, but it usually comes up automatically, but if not, it's like you said, it's. Something you will not remember.
You might be lucky and your browser already will have you logged in.
Yeah, sometimes it'll save it.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other privileges of the floor?
Um I will not be at council in two weeks.
You're gonna be zooming in or you just won't be available? Okay.
Beginning back from Utah, and then we have FIFA.
Oh. And then we have FIFA. Utah, is that the soccer event that you go, okay, great, is that for you or your son? When do we get to see him on the Union, is he gonna break the record of the fourteen year old or not? They're working on it. Good for him.
Is FIFA there?
No, we're going to Supercofa, which is the largest event in the country, and then that night, we actually have FIFA tickets at the lake.
That's for the cl- club championship or something? Alright, very good.
We got tickets a long time ago.
Any other privileges of the floor? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilman Borders, there's a second, Councilman Blunt, all those in favor? Uh any opposed?
Has she been aware, he just called me about what she wants to do with the new. Yes, and I'm talking to, I think it's possible, I mean, why would.
Goodbye, you didn't, did you say meeting is adjourned?
Meeting is adjourned, all those in favor, I will adjourn.
Yeah, we all said it.